I just have a question, please. I don't have the break here. I'm confused about the numbers on the minutes.
Yeah. Probably ten names listed with that.
The number is nine.
The number is nine.
Only last one was ten?
Yep.
Got it. Okay, so with those two typos fixed, we'll change the nines to tens, ten to zero. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? So moving on, beyond the consent agenda, we're going to head over to Assistant Committee Chairperson's update. I have nothing to share at this time, and so we'll move to the good stuff, and that is the student representative report. Hansi, and we have a new student with us who I'll let you introduce.
My name's Ava. I'm a junior from Lancaster. I play lacrosse, and this is my third year on school council, so I'm really excited to be here because it's more into the school.
We're excited to have you, thanks Ava.
Thank you.
I was discussing with T. Van Hansi that we're going to be visiting the student council on January 10th. So, yourself, hopefully our vice chair will be able to join us as well, so we look forward to meeting with the student council and learning about some of the important things students are thinking about in terms of student life and activities in school, so look forward to that.
Should be exciting. So, our report today revolves around some fun stuff that's happening and some stuff that happened last week. We had a great turnout for our homecoming dance, over 400 students showed up, which after paying the DJ brought in a budget of 6,500 to Stuko. We deposited half that money, and now each grade is getting a share of the profits depending on how many kids showed up. The Powerpuff Football game where the girls play and the guys are our coaches and our cheerleaders is on November 20th, followed by our pep rally on the 21st. Our girls soccer team is playing tonight in the Massachusetts D2 States semifinals at 7:00 PM, and we wish them all the best. The school architects were here for four days out of the week to listen from teachers and students to get their feedback. And parent-teacher conferences are happening tomorrow and Friday, and the panorama survey was conducted during our last homeroom to get student feedback on school culture and the community. And students are currently beginning to dive into our portrait of a graduate, where we're starting to focus on what communication truly means to us. That's what we have for you tonight.
That's fantastic, thanks Hansi. I'm going to turn over to the school committee to ask you if you have any questions or comments.
Hi. Hi there.
Hi.
Could you maybe expand a little bit on what you discussed in homeroom regarding school culture? Was that just sort of a one-direction, students giving feedback, or was there a conversation? Was it framed around a particular idea or direction?
Yeah, so it's basically, we were given the survey every year, which is basically asking about, do you feel safe in your community? What resources are you given as a student? It was just like, you fill out the survey, and it's up to like the homeroom teachers, we can have a small discussion about anything that's on your students' minds about fitting into the school community and anything regarding safety.
And do we have a sense of when the results will be collated?
I know Dr. Boynton is going to speak to the survey results, not in complete specificity tonight, but she's going to share how they're influenced by those. Dr. Boynton will have more information for us.
Just as a quick reminder, the panorama surveys are given at the middle point of the year. Remind me.
Fall and spring.
Fall and spring.
And in grades three through 12. We started that last year.
This is the second go-around, which you feel like you're starting to norm it, and the data is more useful.
Yeah, and you'll also see with the panorama surveys, you probably saw some of the references to that in the school improvement plans that will now be stepping into the community using our panorama survey this year. More to come in that after the first of the year.
Any other questions? Excited to hear about the architects being onsite and getting your input in that regard. So, a big shout-out to the girls soccer program. I know our member, Amy Vessel's daughter, is a senior on the team, and that's where she is tonight at that game, so. Well, thanks guys. We are super happy to have both of you guys here, really appreciate the time, and as always, you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go and do what you guys need to do.
That's great, thank you.
All right, so moving right along here, we're going to head over to the superintendent's report, and we have some announcements.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair, for your recognition. Hello, everyone on the committee this evening, and the public as well. Some things for you this evening, this is our first of four reports from the asset of the valid collaborative. Just to remind the committee, there are four reports that the collaborative is required to provide to committees annually, and the first report is generally a summary of the collaborative and some of the goals that are there, so you can see some of the priorities that are happening for ABC right now. I can share with you, just being on that board, that the opening, if you recall, a while back, this board authorized ABC to move forward with their renovation project. And that now is moving along. It looks like they're finally going to have that completed mid-January is punch list time, it sounds like, and that's going to be a great moment for the collaborative, because they'll be able to expand their programming, return, you know, move classrooms into those areas so that they can open the professional development rooms again and start generating some revenue through professional development. So I just highlight that as some of the things that are happening right now with ABC. We do participate, a couple of our students attend the ABC collaborative, and so they also work with us on the negotiation of our specialized transportation contracts. That's our first update. Moving on, I wanted to give an update on enrollment and school of choice. So, Ms. Masterson, if you could bring up the October 1 enrollment. Yes, NRSD, November 1. And so, as we look at this report, this breaks down our enrollment as of that October 1 date. That's an important date because that's a date that the state uses to do lots of important things, like assess enrollment in our towns and to help us with chapter 70 funding and things like that. So, this is the breakdown of the class sizes across our district as of October 1 of this year. So if you scroll down, Ms. Masterson. Yeah, there we go. There we go. And you can see that we're maintaining our class size ratios in the primary grades of 22 or less, and then up to 24 in grades three through 12. If you scroll a little bit down so we can see MRE, you'll notice that in MRE, our grade level was at 72. They are at the number of 24 per classroom. The reason why it reflects 26 there, we have some students that are assigned to those classrooms that access those classrooms for a very small portion of the day because they receive very specialized educational programming in an alternative setting, but they're assigned to that class list for attendance purposes. So we are still maintaining our class size ratios. Next, Ms. Masterson, will you pull up the projection document for enrollment? I'm sharing this with the committee because through the enrollment analysis that I keep regularly, is we need to start looking budgetarily at how many sections that we're going to be preparing for for next year. And you can see when you look at this, we'll start at the high school. The numbers that you see in red that says projected enrollment, five-year average, I keep a running table based off of our October 1 data that goes back frankly more than 20 years. And we are basing our projections on a five-year rolling average of what the change in grade level is year over year, so from eighth grade to ninth grade. And we know that our ninth grade count goes down significantly from eighth grade as students make choices to attend vocational technical school or charter school. So, this is something that we know about that's visible to us. Right now, the five-year average is approximately 46 students, so if you take 46 students from the 241, which is the current eighth grade enrollment, the anticipated enrollment for the incoming freshman class would be 195. This is not an exact science when you're projecting, but it gives us a reasonable approximation of what we should expect in the coming year. So, moving through this document, you would see that as you look at, say, Florence Sawyer, you see the green box and you see the red box. The green box signifies that we need to add a section at that grade, and the red box signifies that we reduce a section in that grade. And that's because, right now, we have three kindergartens at Florence Sawyer, there will be three kindergartens in first grade, and we have a standard practice of beginning budgeting with four kindergartens at each of our schools, because that's the most unpredictable group that's coming forward as we go through the enrollment process throughout the spring. So as we move through there, you'll see that at Center School, currently we have five sections in the second grade, and next year, there will be four sections in the third grade, so that second grade cohort, well, not cohort, the second grade class will be reduced by a section. However, we're watching that fifth grade section very closely, as you see that it's at 72 is a projection, it's 71 right now. So, that could be a simple shifting of our position from second grade to fifth grade depending on what the enrollment looks like throughout the spring and as we learn of notifications of people that are staying or moving. Continuing to move down on the projected enrollments, you can see MRE has a history of gaining a couple of students each year in their cohorts. So as a result, that would take fourth and fifth grade into a need for four sections each next year. So we need to be wary of that as we go as well. Our middle schools, as you know, are based on a subject matter model where there's four sections and they rotate through the sections, and so those classes we're all maintaining, so there's no reason to provide any additional pieces there. And the last piece that I'll provide for you is in the memo, it was following up around school choice. As we opened up school choice, once the school year began, we did not take any more school choice applications. We'll do that each year, but once the year begins, it's fixed at that point. And you can see the number of each grade level that is currently enrolled in school of choice right now. We had last year, nine students that were seniors that left the system, and so you can see that we picked up students in grades five through 12, for a total of about the 26 students right now. So the delta from last year to this year is 12 more students in the school choice over last year. What that translates in terms of chapter 70 funding, we'll know once the calculations are all provided, because the way school choice is handled is through your chapter $70, they take out of your chapter 70 allotment what goes out to other districts and put into your chapter 70 allotment what comes from districts. So we'll know what the fiscal implications are of that during the budget season. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll take some questions before we move to just some updates on strategic work.
I have a quick one. Can you remind us, when do we find out about that ninth grade dip? Is there a point at which the chairman has to alert, or students have to alert?
Yes, we typically begin to get those enrollment numbers, middle school principals have them out there. We get them typically February and March is when the letters begin to go out to students that they've been accepted, but then there's a process where they actually then have to acknowledge that they're attending, and that deadline is, Mr. Bates, May 1 typically is around that deadline?
I think that sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah. So oftentimes, students will notify quickly and they'll notify our offices, and then we keep sort of a running chart, but May 1 is typically about when we know what the number is.
Any other questions?
Ms. Masterson, I wonder if you could go back to the red light, green light document?
The projection.
The projection document? Yep. I'm just looking for a little bit of clarity. So I'm looking at Luther Burbank, grade six, and we've got four sections, 23, 23, 22, and 23, and the projected enrollment is at balance, is that right? So that means grade five is projected to be the new grade six, the zero change?
Yeah, so currently, the grade five enrollment, October 1 of this year at Ray Rollinson, was 91 students. So next year, sixth grade is 91.
At Luther Burbank?
At Luther Burbank, yeah.
So, the maximum enrollment for grade seven is 24, is that right?
For grade. For grades next. I'm not sure.
Grade seven per section, 24 students per section?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, why, so if we're going to be at 23, 23, 22, and 23, why wouldn't we have five openings to max out to 24? Does that make sense?
No. Because it's, the ratio is, we will not exceed 24, so that's why four sections would be necessary. Now, in the middle school model, you'll notice in the eighth grade numbers, because they're tied to cohorts and it's based on subject matter, we have Spanish as the fifth course in eighth grade, so the students are distributed across five sections, and that's by educational design.
Okay, I'm still not, I'm not sure why we're not, why those numbers don't end up equalling to 24 per section? If those account for our availability for school choice openings.
Can you turn him up the center mic? Should be 88?
No, I'm looking at the four numbers in seventh grade, right?
Tell me what you mean by availability for school choice numbers.
So, school choice numbers that you offered us in the spring were based on seats that were available from one year to the next.
Yes. In grades three to 12, we capped school choice at 22.
Right.
And grades K to 2 would be capped at 20, but we did not allow any students in those primary grades.
Allow it for a buffer if anybody moves in.
Yeah.
Okay, that's kind of what I was getting at. Is that what that's for? We're not maximizing it out because we really don't want to put ourselves in a position where we have to take back.
So, for instance, you're already projecting what a recommendation is going to come forward with school choice in April is, I would not recommend we open school choice at seventh grade Luther Burbank because they're at the ceiling of that buffer zone.
Got it, okay.
Whereas, and that's the same for sixth grade here, whereas you might open it, school choice at seventh grade in Hail because we could take up to 88 students there.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
And we're going to be, we're super mindful of, I mean, because at Luther Burbank, we could, in the eighth grade, have a whole lot of kids because we're pretty far below that buffer, but we're mindful of how that would impact the high school.
Yeah, and if you remember on that recommendation, we weren't accepting more than four students per grade level per school. To manage that, as sort of a governor to make sure we didn't, you know.
Or in the high school, when they all come together.
Yeah.
When you're accepted for school choice at one grade, do you have to reapply each year, or does that ride you up? So that commits you to the remaining grade?
Yeah, Miss Ellis, that, once you accept a school choice student, you have that student through graduation.
Why are there five eighth grade sections at Florence Sawyer and Luther Burbank but not Hail?
Do you see where the zero is on the Hail there? You can call that a cell error if I didn't hit the divisor correctly, so that popped up as a zero. It should be distributed there as a section.
Any other questions?
Thank you, I see that error now, as well as grade seven, because those four students are distributed in the other four classrooms because they're in specialized programming.
Maybe there's like a good reason for this that you can't share, but in the MRE section, that's 26, even though those kids are only there for a very small period of time, why didn't you just make them all 24 and disperse? Is it about staffing?
That's a local decision at the school, I think I would have to give some detail about that, but yes. And it's to help, you would assign them to a common classroom because it's related to the schedules throughout the day as well, so it keeps them on a common cohort throughout the day through their rotations and their specials.
Do you have a breakdown of the towns that we, the student, from what towns the students that are applying to, school choice are coming from? I'd be curious where we're seeing an influence.
I don't have that breakdown.
Yeah.
We could create something if that's what you wish, there was no real pattern to it.
Yeah. But you show us by the town, at budget season, you show us by town, how many kids go out?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking?
Well, we don't break it down by town, no.
I just didn't know, again, if we're seeing it from like very close throughout, in towns or further out.
Oh, the kids were coming in.
Just curious, how do they do?
Yeah, yeah. I don't have that on any paper tonight.
Is, I mean, is that something that like maybe the school district doesn't like to share because it gets too close to their details, their private?
I think that's right.
Okay.
And I think it's, I think it's, you know, when we open school choice, we also open our values, and so we're saying to all the students that are coming in, you are us, you're not them. And so we want to make sure that they feel included in the community in that way. But, you know, it is typically surrounding towns. When it's not surrounding towns, a common pattern is it's an employee that may be coming to distance that is bringing their child with them. We have a couple of those scenarios as well.
Okay, guys, let's move on to strategic work.
Yes, let me get my act together here. Yes. So a couple of pieces, we'll get into detailing this, so I'll be brief on these particular pieces that we're here for strategic work on tonight. One is, our principals are going to be sharing the school improvement plans this evening, and I hope in your review of the school improvement plans, that you're able to set the alignment to the district plan as we use the strategic plan as the baseline for our work in our school improvement plans. That's all part of what we did as part of the strategic plan process, as we solicited and garnered information from our community about those things going forward, so it should be lifting and advancing that work forward. We're also going to have a universal screener assessment update provided by Assistant Superintendent Friend. This is our first dip into showing you all the data that we collect through the Renaissance Learning Platform that has multiple measures within it, and Ms. Friend will explain that. The last part, about the ELA curriculum review for family feedback, I would like to turn to Assistant Superintendent Friend to give you an update on that strategic work.
This is super exciting, so I don't know if any of our families, or if any of our committee members are on the receiving end of the email and the invitation to participate, I think so. We're piloting a new tool, Thought Exchange, to enable our families to provide us with feedback on their perspectives as it relates to literacy, as we engage in our K-5 curriculum review process with phase one. So, we piloted this tool and sent an invitation to our pre-K-5 families to participate in the thought exchange. And the thought exchange provides families with an open-ended opportunity to tell us about their perspectives around what they want to see in terms of literacy instruction for their child or their children. And then it also provides families with an opportunity to rate the thoughts of others. And so the result is, is that we receive information not only in open-ended form about what our families are telling us, but also information about what ratings are being rated as the highest in terms of priority areas. So we're going to be able to, in the RDM, see key themes and perspectives emanating from the thought exchange, which will close at the end of the day today. And I look forward to providing the committee an update around those themes, and we'll be using the information from those themes to help inform our next steps as it relates to decisions regarding K-5 curriculum. We've had great participation. I'd love to add, the exchange this morning, and I think we were close to 4,000 thought exchanges ratings. So good participation with our families on that. Good feedback.
We're very excited about the possibility of this tool. We're very excited about the possibility of this tool. We're working the Thought Exchange right now, they, we did this first dip in the Thought Exchange as a test of the product, and so as we go through the process and we garner the information from it, you may see this being advanced forward in budget season as one of the new tools we want to advance forward, but we'll make that decision once we've had a chance to analyze the results.
Especially for those who did get the survey, do you want to, do you have any questions on that?
So, I'm just curious, like, when you say it's an open-ended Thought Exchange, did you, was there some kind of a prompting question, or was it just, what do you think?
Yeah, so the question, um, I believe it's in the update we prepared, is it, is it in the update? I don't know, like, Ms. Masters, anything, scroll up a little bit.
The link should say just there.
There was one big question, and that was, as the district is assessing our K-5 literacy curriculum and making decisions about next steps, we want to hear from our families. Here was the question, what aspects of literacy instruction are most important to you as a parent guardian? That was the open-ended question to which our families responded. There were some demographic questions, specifically what grade level is your child, and what school does your child attend? And there was one Likert scale question regarding how satisfied have you been, are you with your child's literacy development?
So were there some, like, within that open-ended question, were there some prompts or some thoughts to get people thinking of ideas, or was it just...
Oh, that's the idea.
It was just wide open?
Right, so when a thought is, so if you all were to put in your thoughts and then I come in, when I come in, I'm going to see what you put in there, and then if I say, oh, that thought's meaningful to me, I might five-star for the next thought. That was not so important to me, so I three-star. And so what happens over time is the thoughts that are put out there in this community setting rise to the top as the most important sort of thoughts of the community because they've amplified that. And you can't see what others are amplifying until you do your own, so it protects from any bias you might see from other, other ratings.
I will say, one of the things that wasn't clear until after I went through the process and then started rating other people's Thought Exchanges is that what I would, what I said was taken verbatim. So I don't know if there's a way to communicate that to families if we use it again so that it's more clear, because you could tell the way that some of the Thought Exchanges were, not that I could tell who specific people were, but there was some specificity to their comments. And I just didn't realize that when I submitted mine, so like, I saw mine and I was like, oh, that's mine, well, of course I'm going to five-star it. But it wasn't clear at the time that it would be the exact same thing that would be going out.
So you didn't even know what other people said until after you finished yours?
Yeah, you submit yours and then you rate other people's. So it was like, I love hamburgers, I love hamburgers, and then I go and say, well, I don't love hamburgers, I like hot dogs, so I started rating on that.
It's actually a really fascinating methodology because you, I've never seen it before, but when somebody puts something on the table, all of those comments then have to be given equal weight. And so what the Thought Exchange does is it starts maybe lowering the weight of comments that are not five-starred, even though those are still important comments, and I'm sure they will still consider them, they are not concerns that are shared by the vast majority of people. And so it, it like weighs the responses in a way that straight-up surveys haven't never done in my experience before.
Like Reddit elevates popular things and revokes things that are unpopular?
Correct.
Like upvoting.
Yeah, but then, like, if I gave some feedback and you said essentially the same thing, and you said essentially the same thing, then you're getting that, are you getting it five-starred three times, or one gets five-starred and the other's... I'm just curious, I'm curious.
After I put in my open-ended, it only asked me to weigh a handful of others. And I'm not sure how the methodology chose which ones I weigh, but I'm sure it's scientific.
Some AI tech, AI technology interwoven in there as well. I'll be excited to share with the committee what it looks like on the other side, if I'm able to do so. They, um, there's a tabulation with the number of times a word or a concept is mentioned as well. There, um, there's an element that identifies like the most polarizing opinions, the most positive and the most negative, and maybe suggests some common ground to consider as well.
There's like a word cloud.
There's a word cloud. I look forward, I look forward to giving, I look forward to all the reports, and I look forward to giving that report.
Very good.
Do you want to continue to, strategic work?
We're done.
Okay.
Unless there's any more questions.
Any other questions on strategic work?
Um, so, thank you very much, Lauren, appreciate that, thank you Kirk. We are going to, without objection, if nobody objects, move over to new business.
Yeah, I think we'll come back to do, if the chair's building school improvement plans in the universal, the detail of those things.
Yes.
After we have an opportunity to hear on the travel requests from our Rural Language Department.
Yeah, so we have some guests in the audience that we want to be respectful of their time. So we are going to head over to the first one, which is the NRHS German GAPP, Greek Travel Request. All right, so feel free to join us at the front, guys. Oh, welcome, thanks so much for joining us, really appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
A quick thing for the committee, typically we don't present and vote in a single meeting, but we are looking to do, we are looking to take votes tonight.
Yeah, there is, well, you know, that's the role of the committee, we do want to get started. The documentation does say that we would want to have that ninety days before the trip, and we would like right at what that would be, the ninetyth day, if we were to follow that title, so.
Okay, and these votes are, just so that you guys know, rather non-controversial, but also time-sensitive and preliminary.
Yes.
So similar to previous votes we've taken around travel thus far, just to give you guys some comfort there. I know we don't like to typically propose and vote in a single meeting, but that's what we're asking for tonight. So let's see how we feel about that. So, how did you point this here? I'll pass the baton to you.
Thank you very much, I'm very excited to be here to support two of my world language teachers and getting international travel back up and running for our Nishoba Regional High School students. I want to applaud the work of Bina and Robin, making deep curricular connections for the trips, as well as deep connections with our Portrait of a Nishoba graduate competencies, which I hope you saw in the report. And without further ado, for the gap trip, I'll turn it over to Bina.
Yeah, um, so we're hoping to take these kids on this gap, so Gap, this organization was actually founded in Boston in the seventies. It's an exchange that is supported by, by the Goethe Institute, which is part of the German Foreign Office as well, and it's also supported by the State Department, so it's a really established program. There is thousands of students going every year with this program, there's some funding involved that comes to that too, to help us support costs or keep costs down, as well as special flight rates, insurance, and so on, so there's a lot of prestige and a lot of advantages for students to go through this program. And it is a cultural exchange, so it's not a tourist opportunity. It is really a cultural exchange where the students engage with their exchange partners and their families and experience school life and family life in our partner community in Weilheim Bavaria. I don't know if you all had a chance to see the materials, and I don't know if you want any more details, or I'm just not sure. I do have a presentation, but I'm not sure if it's necessary.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
This afternoon, I sent, we had some supporting documentation sent, I think Mr. Powell for, let me know that I neglected to get that in there, so the committee should have received the supporting documentation, the rationale. You would see in that supporting documentation the ties to our Portrait of the Graduate and the building of those competencies through international travel and exchange. And so, you know, with that, I would just take questions from the committee. Where's that supporting documentation? It was emailed to you this afternoon.
We emailed it this afternoon, like at about three forty-five, four o'clock, something like that.
I saw it. That was my error in providing the document, I provided the, this document that you see on the screen, the supporting documentation.
I see the German videos, I see the French stuff, but I don't see the German itinerary or rationale, so.
I have one copy.
Well, I'm looking through it, I'm not sure if there's any questions from the group.
Yeah. I'll just have a private self-presentation.
I'm just going to have this.
Yeah, so maybe we'll go ahead with the, um, we'll go ahead with the presentation, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure, um, how do I do this?
Alita will do it for you.
Should I share it with Alita?
You already did.
You already did.
No, no, that is, oh.
Oh, no, that's the German, that's the French one.
I, I, I thought, I made this, but I wasn't sure if we can present it or not. I wasn't sure about the timing. All right, I'll send it to Alita right now. Okay. I just shared it with you.
Everybody can read my email. In the meantime.
I'll, I'll unplug you until you're ready.
I'm sorry, they're all from Lauren.
Who's your real boss? Who's your real boss?
I was like...
Okay, yeah, so you see Weilheim, that's our partner community in Bavaria, it's a very similar community to our communities, it's about forty, fifty minutes from Munich, which is a major city, state capital, just like we are from Boston, so it's comparable communities, which I think is also nice that, that we have that. Yeah, so this is just a little bit about Gap, that organization, it's called German-American Partnership Program, again, funded in Boston, which is kind of cool, I think, and it's a big program, so it has about four hundred thousand alumni at this point, nine thousand plus students participate each year, and four hundred, seven hundred fifty-plus schools in their network. At Nishoba was established in two thousand nine, and it's since been run biannally until the pandemic, when we had to stop. Yeah, there's a longstanding relationship between the communities, I mean, there's a lot of families in these communities that have hosted or send their kids, or both. Between the teachers, Mrs. Davis is over here, so she has gone many times and knows these teacher really well, formed close connections, as well as the whole language department for those that never mind, that have been involved in it, and of course, so for the teachers and the families. So it's a big, I think, long-established part, and then again, like I said, students are immersed in family life, school life, it's not like going on a tourist trip, and of course, we got the special pricing, trying to keep everything cost as low as possible. Of course, the flights are the major part of the trip cost, yeah, because it's a little further than Canada. Okay, um, I don't know if we have time for this, this is our partners in Weilheim, they had a little video with a little message for us, I'm not sure if we have time for it, it's up to committee.
I'm sorry, what is the duration?
Four minutes.
Four minutes, I don't know if that's...
Yeah, let's do it, I'm in, Scott, I'm in, if we have volume.
Yeah, it's a little quiet.
Help us. To our rescue.
Change the audio settings on your, change it on your laptop to HDMI.
I have to stop. Go to the rescue. Catching it out here, do it though.
While we wait, just, I ask, when we host families from the school, is that the same year, or is it the other year?
Yes, so the players, we would go in February, partially during February break, and then plus one week, so try to limit the time that they're missing school, and then they would come in March, they would actually come just three, two or three weeks later, so it's a quick exchange, it's a nice turnaround, and so it's really close together.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, hi, my name is Marvin Heldert, I teach English, German, and Philosophy at Martin Weilheim. We're a fairly big grammar school in the south of the area, in the lovely area of Offenbecken, which is between Munich and the Ost, which you could see in the background. Students come from different towns and villages around Weilheim, which is a bit like Nishoba, which also caters for lots of surrounding communities. Our school, two schools share inspiring and lively friendship and partnership, and this has been going on for almost fifteen years now. I think our last visit was in two thousand nineteen, until the COVID pandemic hit, and traveling was prohibited altogether. We didn't give up though, and we had a fairly interesting virtual exchange partnership, and you're going to meet some students presently. Now, this year, we would like to resume where we left off, we need to be able to travel again, which would be really exciting. And that's why I'm asking for your help and your support, because we would all, we all very, well, care very much for the project. Because these exchange visits, they offer unique chance to get to know not just the people, but also the in-school systems, the ways of life, and also to take part in the daily lives of families, and our friends, meet new people, and all in all, have an interesting and exciting time abroad. The students go to school in their respective partner schools, for example, we have a program here called Rental American, so the Americans...
We have a rented jerk.
And tell students about their lives in the city, which is a very, very popular. But also, we have field trips, we go to visit the sites, like the Norweg's castles. They spend, you are going to spend a couple of days in Munich, museums, attractions, and shopping, go to the Baden-Hill Arena. Really exciting things. All in all, it's also really important to actually share the daily lives of people and live with exchange parties, and see what it's really like to live in a different country. Finally, in the exchange, we regularly visit two football clubs and some rock and hard swell, which is why, I think, especially in this day and age, we should welcome every possible chance to promote intercultural friendships and international visits, because it's really important to look past prejudices and see how the other people actually live and who they care for. So that's why we would be really grateful if we can pick it up again, like I said, and we could meet each other next year. Thank you for your attention.
I'm really a huge basketball fan, I would love to go to America, I want to watch the Boston game, the Boston. I just want to see culture in America, make friends, American friends, and then I will show you Germany, Munich is a great city, I saw many Americans that you're doing this, they all say they love Munich, globally.
I took part in the virtual exchange as well, and I would love to show you a festival around in Germany, in Weilheim, in Munich, but second of all, I would love to be in America with you to experience the school life that you have were there in your high schools, yes, and at the back of...
I'm sixteen years old, and I also took part at the virtual exchange, and now I would like to travel to America, and I also would like to host a person from the virtual exchange, and I would like to show them Weilheim and Munich, because I think it's really beautiful around here, and I'm very interested to... And I'm very interested to visit America and especially Boston, because I think it's very interesting.
I would like to go to America for, like, to meet people that are in the culture or do some sports.
Fantastic. Uh, so thank you for that. Uh, we appreciate it. So with your, yeah.
If you want to keep, I don't know, is that good? Do you want to keep going?
It's a second video.
We don't have to watch it, but it's also the proposal. If you didn't get the materials, it has all the itinerary and all the information in the.
Yes.
In, in this, yeah.
I owe the committee an apology that in grabbing the link, it grabbed the link from a single file as opposed to the entirety of the entire folder. So I re-sent, I reshared the entire folder, so now we have the entire folder there.
Oh, if you want to, no, just the next slide. Sorry, sorry. Yeah, so this is from German Honor Society. Um, the audio is very loud. They put some very loud music behind it. Um, it's mostly some students, they, they asked other students that are interested in the exchange what they think. So there's a couple quotes from other students what they think. Um, it's like two minutes long.
Yeah.
Maybe next slide, yeah.
So I think that we actually got this.
Okay.
And we used to do this, all right?
Yeah.
So I think we can skip this one.
Then we just go to the, the next thing is the itinerary. Uh, skip to the next slide, yeah. Okay. Um, so this is the proposed itinerary. Um, we're leaving on Saturday, land in Munich, and then stay two nights in Munich at a hostel and do sightseeing in Munich before we take the train over to Weilheim to that community, where they then will start staying with the families. Then they spend the rest of the week in the partner's school, going to school, experiencing family life, uh, and doing, and doing activities which, with the families, just like the students that come here would do with our host families. We don't expect them to do anything special, just like do your normal activities, um, so that they can experience like what it's actually like to live here. Um, and then the next slide is the next week. Yeah, the next week, we have a couple, um, field trips planned, so they will still go to school, but, and that's also part of the GAP exchange, um, program, that they attend school and experience school life. Um, we'll do one day trip to Nuremberg, which is also in Bavaria, just a short train ride away, where we will look at the medieval city, core of the city. And it's still there, as well as a documentation center about the Nazi Party, one of the few architectural things that are still remade, that haven't been torn down in Germany from the Nazi era, which they now use as an education center. Um, and then the other thing is, we're gonna go to a gorge in Garmisch, which we used to, uh, we chose the Olympics, which Olympics a while back, and, um, so you can do a stadium tour, and it's a beautiful landscape that you can see there, so let's go to a castle that's on the way. Um, yeah, and then that Saturday, we fly back and students get home and wait two weeks, and wait for the exchange partners to come to them. Yeah, and if you keep going, there's just a little bit of the rationale, which I think you now have. Obviously, the costs. Um, so again, the majority is obviously the flights. It's the main part of the cost. Um, and, yeah, the total right now is two thousand, but by the time we actually get to book the flights, I got the quote a couple of months back, so they likely went up. And I thought, we also want to put in a little bit of a buffer for any kinds of emergency, anything, any prices went up, because we don't want to have to charge families after the fact. We'd rather cut checks and send the money back if we have leftover money, which is what's been done in the past. Um, most pricing, I looked up the actual pricing, like to-date pricing, but some things can always change, and some things were based on previous travel, where we couldn't get definite quotes yet for like the insurance cost and so on. So some of these are slightly estimated. Um, yeah, this is just a summary of the rationale for travel, alignment with St. Samuel's and Nischova Portrait of a Graduate. Obviously, we want to enhance language proficiency, have those students actually have the experience to use everything in an actual authentic context, you know, in the real world, and realize that the language that they've been using in the classroom that actually works, you can actually use it for real, real-life situations, which I always tell my students too. When I learned English, I'm from Germany, so when I learned English and I went to England the first time, and I ordered ice cream in English, and then I got ice cream. That was such an experience for me, because I remember, oh my God, this works, they actually say these things. It's not just like, because in the classroom, it often feels like make-believe. It's like, okay, yeah, we talk English to each other, but really, we speak German. So it's really transformative experience, and I've been there on the other end. So, um, it's, do these kids meet so much, and they just feel so much more confident when they come back, and that they're really, it puts a lot of motivation, cultural learning, understanding, and so many things that they can, that just you can't get within the classroom limitations. And even if not all students can go, even having a student in the classroom that can talk about the experience and can form that connection, and then gets them into the friend circle or in their chat group with the other students that they met, is also like very valuable for the rest of the week, even though they won't all go. Um, yeah, and then, yeah, this just spells out, if you want to just take a look, um, the different standards for world language that we're hoping to really hit or deepen with this trip for the students. And this is in more detail in the document that I think we will share with you now.
No, this is in your Google Drive at this point. And we'll post it to the materials as well.
Yeah, and this is the Nischova Graduate Competencies Alignment. I know, scary.
Day seven of the trip?
Uh, so a couple of questions. Um, you said that it's biannual. Is this something that you're trying to bring back in that regard?
Yeah, so that every other year, so that way, um, all students would have the opportunity to go. Because depending what year it is, what year, so we do open it to freshmen when they come in. It's, that has, we've done it in the past, but sometimes, you're a freshman, you're really not ready to go, you don't want, but then you still have the chance to go your junior year, and the opportunity will come around again, so that the students really have the, a good chance to go on this trip over there at Nischova.
Um, I have a couple more questions. Would I defer? Anybody else have a question?
I just have a comment. I just think this is great. I did a semester abroad in college, and it was transformative. So I think that being able to offer this at the high school level is an incredible opportunity, so.
Is it always just you chaperones who accompany the students?
Um, yeah, well, it depends on how many students, but we typically have taken fifteen, and since I'm just, you know, taking this over, I'm trying not to mess with the running system, you know, so. And Mrs. Davis has gone several times, so, um, we're trying to just pick up and continue the, do a continuation of that, yeah. Which is, I think, the required number for that group, yeah.
Um, I assume that you need Nischova families onboard to reciprocate. So do you think that that would be a problem?
Um, it hasn't been in the past. Um, we have a couple of people signed up. We have a few people very enthusiastically saying, we have five beds, we're ready to go, however many you need. So, um, we, we're hopeful that it'll all work out. Um, in the past, when there was not enough people that were able to host, we had, um, teachers help out with that, and so on. So there are generally enough people in the community, or people whose kids just graduated, that are willing to take people in. So generally, that hasn't been a problem, so we're hoping it won't be.
Okay, great. Um, do you also, uh, have we settled all the insurance issues? So dealing with what we did in previous years, um, goodness knows what might happen with COVID or that's something that we'd want to have assurances on, that the kids wouldn't lose their money.
So there is travel insurance and health insurance offered through the GAP program. So they have, um, an insurance broker, um, that works specifically with these GAP programs, uh, which is what has been used in the past. And I know, and it's a German insurance, so it just makes it a little bit on the safer side, that it's a company that is in Germany, right? Um, and there have been some instances where the health insurance was needed, and there haven't been any problems as far as I can, from a predecessor and with conversation with Mrs. Davis, that has all been in order every time, and we're gonna continue with that.
Okay, that's better. Okay, I have one more question, I'm so sorry. Um, I feel like I can't let it go, because, um, at one point, we made mention of an educational center for the Nazi Party. Can you elaborate a little bit on that or clarify?
Uh, yeah, so, um, after, we were to most of the Nazi architecture, though, so the fascist architecture was torn down, like any remnants, everything was torn down. There's only one building in Berlin that is the, um, um, treasury, and this. And this was built, I don't know if people are familiar with the ideology, with the architectural ideology, which was supposed to be very imposing and making people, like the fascist architecture. They have it in Italy still a lot. Um, so this was supposed to be like, uh, a very large ground for party congregations and for indoctrination and propaganda. Um, they never really finished it, uh, but they made the choice to not tear this down and use it as an educational center instead, similarly to concentration camps that were turned into memorials and educational centers, so that students can go, previous generations will, following generations will learn about it. Remembrance culture is really big in German culture, so you will find, um, you know, reminders of the Holocaust everywhere. They have little stones at every city, in front of every house, where, um, a person was deported from and what happened to them. So that's, if you walk, it's very, you are very, it's very, very much aware. Buildings say, built, destroyed, like from the war. So there's a lot of, um, they're trying to keep it very much alive, to make sure that people are aware what happened and people don't forget. So, and I think this is something, that's also important for, or important and interesting for students to see. Um, we made the choice to do one or the other. There's also DACHA, made the choice not to do two of them, because it's obviously not the most uplifting experience, but I think it's a, it's a powerful educational experience to learn about these things. Um, so, yeah, obviously, people have gone to DACHA, which is a former concentration camp, also educational center, not a memorial.
Okay. Um, so, we will put a motion on the table here for our German GAP group travel request.
I move to approve the NRHS German-American Partnership Program Group, consisting of fifteen students and two chaperones. All chaperones will be fingerprinted and recorded to travel to Munich, Weilheim, and Nuremberg, Germany from February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, until March second, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? I just would, um, I, you will bring us back additional information when we understand, like, final pricing, things like that, but this is the approval.
Dr. White?
Yes. I will bring back final.
I feel like there's a mounting list of trips that we're gonna have to hear back on. Okay, great. All right, all those in favor? Fantastic, thanks, guys. Um, woo, we did it. Okay, let's go to the next one.
I think that would be me. I'd like to introduce Robin Hermans, who is going to, um, share our proposal for Quebec City.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name's Robin Hermans. I'm the new French teacher, or semi-new. This is my second year at Nischova. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm proposing tonight a field trip to Quebec City, our lovely neighbor, just to the north, to, uh, practice our French, and also, again, that put it to your experience that we were, that Bina just very, very well explained. I will, in effort of time, why don't we go right to, do you have any questions for me? Or I can show you my presentation.
She's pulling you up.
So this is a field trip proposal for, um, two nights, one, uh, three days. We would take a bus up, and you can sort of see a picture of the, actually, the next slide will have a photo of the last field trip I did bring to Quebec City of high school students. Uh, a few years ago, there were a hundred and one students, because everyone wanted to go. The entire French, all from eighth grade through twelfth grade wanted to come. So I had a hundred and one, two buses, this was a little intense, but, uh, what I'm trying to say is it was a really great experience. I do have experience leading and taking these field trips to France, to Norm, um, in this case, to Quebec City. I've chosen Quebec City, if it's okay with you. It's nice and close, it's not expensive, and it's an awesome experience for the kids, so. Uh, here it is, my objective is to receive approval from you. Um, the next two slides are why, who, when, what, how much, and any questions you might have. So we can go to the next slide already. The why also is very, this will mirror, um, what Bina proposed in her slide about the communications. There's a lot of evidence that goes into those five Cs, the communication cultures, connections, comparisons, and communities. It does stress the application of learning language beyond the instructional setting. And so just preparing learners for, to apply these skills onto these standards. And I liked this one, but over time, you like this, second language learners do have improved test scores, and they do think more divergently to, and they do very, very well even after in English, which is super cool. So, uh, the next slide, there's, if you wanted to click on the links, that's the research, if you want to go into the deep dive. What it is, is here's a rough sample of an agenda for the first two days. Um, you would leave school at seven AM. It's a, I would say, a seven-hour bus trip. It's broken up by the border in Vermont that goes up into, uh, Quebec. We will meet, we're going with a tour, and so a tour guide is with us the whole time. They will organize the whole, the nitty-gritty. Um, you see a sample, uh, itinerary. I will not go into gory details unless you would like to know. Um, go on to the next slide. The rough price per student is not too bad. Um, it's between, I have two companies who are vying for our lovely adventure. If it's approved, um, that would be between seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that's, what's included will be the health and accident insurance, all transportation, all tours, the hotel. Um, as for meals, the two breakfasts, two dinners, and one lunch are included. What's not included would be the cancellation insurance, which you guys talked about before. That is, uh, seventy-nine dollars, one quoted. Um, two travel lunches, which the parents can pack, uh, and your, the students spending money. Our proposal is seventy-five dollars, but that's up to them. Uh, so those are the two groups I'm looking at. Jump Street, who have in the past been used by Nischova, and Landmark, who is recommended by another, um, high school near here, Bromfield. And they're based out of Middleton, Massachusetts. One, Middleton, one is Montreal-based, one is Massachusetts-based. And, any questions? I went through very fast, so I hope, um, I can answer anything you'd be interested in.
I guess I would ask the same question. Are you looking to do this annually, biannually?
If I had a dream, which I do, I would rotate Quebec City one year, Montreal the next, France the next, rotate in that order. Um, Montreal and Quebec City being less expensive and very comforting for most people. And Quebec being the big jump, excuse me, France being the bigger jump, more expensive, that would be probably more of an exchange. Um, and there are some, that's the other two groups I've done before, were exchanges in Normandy and in Paris. So we can just cross it. Does that answer your question? At times. I would, I would, my, my, my dream role, but one step at a time. Quebec City.
Just to quote that one right now. Any other questions?
How many students was it proposed for?
I'm proposing a busload of forty. Um, again, the last time I did that, I had a hundred and one, so I hope that doesn't happen. But it was just, we can pick a little bit on that. Okay, so I'm proposing forty. I don't know, because I don't have, uh, data.
With four to five chaperones?
Yes, roughly a one to ten ratio.
Any more questions? I think we'll go for the motion at this point, Mr. Ward, if you don't mind.
I move to approve the Nischova General High School, ninth through twelfth grade, French-language students. Uh, traveled, uh, French-language students, consisting of forty students and four to five chaperones. All chaperones will be fingerprinted and recorded to travel to. all chaperones will be fingerprinted and cored to travel to Quebec City, Canada from March 21st, 2024 through March 23rd, 2024.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Woo, good travel. We really appreciate you doing this for the kids. It's a fantastic benefit and they're, I hope, very grateful to your hard work, so thank you.
Thank you very much to the committee. Greatly appreciated. Good work, ladies.
All right, guys, so we're gonna continue the fun here. Cue our field trip. Cue our field trip. So, I'm gonna give it to you, Superintendent Downing, to cue up our robotics travel.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is, Mr. Fordiani is here at my request this evening to present the robotics travel trip because the past two years in a row, we've had the same experience, and that is our robotics team, who has a history of being very successful, goes into the local competitions, do very well, and qualify for national competition. But the timeline of that happens in such a way to where we're not within the 90 days, we're outside of those windows, and we tend to end up having to do some type of fire drill event to get the approvals in order for Mr. Fordiani and the team to get their, all their organization. So I asked him to come forward tonight to present that request once again and have asked him to utilize the financials from last year's trip as sort of evidence, recognizing that, that there's gonna be some differentiation to that because it's a new year. But bring this forward to you now to ensure that we're doing this in a timely fashion. So with that, Madam Chair.
I don't have a presentation. I'm also, so we have not qualified for this, and so this is, you know, bad karma to get approval. So, but, okay. So here we are, we have done well. The kids are pretty into it. We had a very successful 2023 season. We did go to the world championships. We got in alliance with international teams. Came just a whisker away from making it to the finals of the world championship. You approved the trip we just took to California for a big invitational tournament with a bunch of world champions. That was just unbelievable. So, so here we are again. The trip, the competition is over April vacation, kind of nicely, so we would leave on either a Tuesday or early Wednesday and come back either Saturday or early Sunday. Stay in a hotel in Houston. We're trying to get a hotel that's within walking distance of the venue. Last year, we rented a couple of vans because we did not do that. We have numerous adult, non-parent mentor chaperones, as well as numerous parents go. Everybody's cored and fingerprinted. And, you know, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. I mean, we're hoping the cost will be somewhere before fundraising, between $800 and $1,000 a student, not counting meals. We've managed to raise $8,000 or $9,000 the last couple of times we've gone to offset. You know, we do a GoFundMe. You know, there's past successes, no guarantee of future performance, but we hope to keep the cost around $500 a student. We've been pretty good at meeting our, our goals for fundraising.
Fantastic. So let's go for the motion and then we'll open it up for discussion.
I'll move to approve the NRHS First Robotics Team, consisting of 20 to 25 students and six or more chaperones, all chaperones will be fingerprinted and cored, to travel to the first world championship in Houston, Texas, from April 16th, 2024 through April 21st, 2024.
I'll second that. Discussion.
It's not gonna be needing pretty sure.
All those in favor? Good luck.
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it.
All right, guys, so rerouting here back toward our strategic work, we're going to welcome all of our amazing school-based leaders to the table, and we're gonna look at our school improvement plans.
Are we gonna finish voting?
Sure.
Kate, you're last.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do this.
Still one Friday.
The hardest part is sitting there. All right, guys, so the school improvement plan presentation is coming at you here. Kirk is going to do the school introduction.
Great, I want to introduce to the committee, to our committee at large, our principal team here at the Nishoba Regional School District, Mr. Bates at Fort Sawyer School, Mr. Grady at Hale Middle School, Mr. Blanchard at Mary Wilton Elementary, Mr. O'Shea at Lutherburg Middle School, Ms. Zablik at Center School, and Dr. Boynton from Nishoba Regional High School. They've worked diligently to put together a collaborative presentation for you to show the work that we're doing to advance our strategic plan. So with that, I turn it over to our principals.
Good evening. On behalf of the NRSD principals, we want to thank you for giving us some time tonight to present this year's iterations of our school improvement plans. As you may recall, Superintendent Downing has paved the road for us to work together on common goals that build the foundation that the high school expands upon, with the NRSD strategic plan as our North Star. Tonight, we will review the school improvement plan review process and our existing goals and share some of the highlights of the PK through eight and NRHS school improvement plans. Alita, if you go to the next slide. So we began our SIP review work at our leadership retreat, drawing upon data in the state of the schools' presentations, including areas of success and areas of continued growth. From that initial stage, the principals met several times to review progress on our goals while identifying next steps toward achieving our goals. As always, our school councils play an important role in helping to guide this work. For a review of our goals and highlights, I'll turn it over to my colleagues, starting with the little school principal, Grady.
Thank you, Principal Bates. Alita, could you go to the next slide? So what you see here in this slide is something that Principal Bates alluded to just a minute ago, and that is the coherence that we have across all schools. Each of the elementary and middle schools share the same four school improvement goals. When designing the goals, we were intentional about tightly aligning them within the Nishoba Regional Strategic Plan in mind. You can see that, see that at the very center of the slide. The goals, these four goals focus on communication, professional learning, communities, social emotional learning, and safety. What you're gonna see in the next slide is some of the, not all of them, the more specific data about these four goals. Thank you, Alita. So I'll start off with goal one. In goal one, we're working to address strategic initiative one, which is consistent communication structures and protocols, and strategic initiative three, which is improve upon the communication of student progress. As a district, we've been collecting, as you know, we've been collecting various forms of data that have helped to better understand our students' learning experience at Nishoba. This has helped us to be precise on the achievement data that we share with you and our families. The adoption of the new district-wide communication tools and procedures, such as SMOR, Thrillshare, parent summaries in Google, and our new school website, we're able to see the effectiveness of our communication through the metrics that are provided to us by these various platforms. In addition to these already implemented tools, we'll be conducting parent caregiver surveys to gather information about our reach to equitable education. These communication platforms and surveys will continue to shape how, when, and in what way we communicate with our, with our communities about our students' progress and their educational experiences. We will have successfully, while we have successfully attained several milestones in the pursuit of school improvement goal one, our current focus for this academic year is to continue to move our schools toward achieving strategic initiative one and three. With this, I turn it over to my colleague, Principal Blanchard.
Thank you, Principal Grady. Our second goal is aligned with strategic initiative two, develop a professional learning community culture across all schools, departments, and grade levels. Our work on this goal began last year with professional development through SolutionTree that centered around the foundation of the work, which is the three big ideas of PLC, which is a focus on student learning, collaborative culture and collective responsibility, and results orientation, looking at evidence of student learning. Embedded within those three big ideas are the four questions that drive the work of the PLC, and those are what do we want our students to know and be able to do? How do we know that they've learned what we intended? How do we respond when students haven't learned? And how do we address the needs of those students who have demonstrated mastery of material already? Our work continued over the summer as we developed our building schedules to include dedicated time for teams to meet in PLCs and also dedicated time for what I need now blocks, which is our win time. That's targeted, time dedicated for targeted interventions for students, which also supports the work we're doing as a district to establish multi-tiered systems of support. Our instructional coaches have been critical partners within our PLCs in helping teams to analyze student learning data, including the data that we gather through our universal screeners, grouping students for win, and planning targeted instructions. As a result, and through this process, we're building our collective efficacy as a district to affect positive outcomes for all students. And with that, I'll hand it over to Principal O'Shea to talk about goal three.
Good evening. I'm here to discuss our goals, our progress on our goals integrating social emotional learning as part of Nishoba's commitment to equity and inclusion. Under District Strategic Initiative Three, we're dedicated to embedding SEL best practices into daily instruction in student life. We've implemented targeted instruction, professional development, notably calm compassionate teaching by Larry Epstein, to equip our staff with the necessary skills and understanding for this integration. This professional development will continue this year, ensuring all staff are well-versed in these calm compassionate teaching methods. We're actively incorporating SEL into our daily instruction, utilizing strategies learned from the calm compassionate teaching within our STAT and MTSS models. In addition, we're using data from tools such as Panorama to help us create goal-based interventions tailored to meet individual student needs. The district equity team will continue guiding the equity work that was started last year. At the school level, our school teams will examine data gathered from multiple sources. We continue to use Panorama platform to collect self-reported feedback directly from students about their experiences. The student feedback then provides critical insights that allow us to better understand their perspectives and needs. In summary, these initiatives represent our ongoing efforts to create a more inclusive, supportive, emotionally intelligent learning environment. We believe all these steps are crucial for ensuring equitable opportunity and outcomes for all our students. Now I'll turn it over to Principal Zablik to discuss strategic plan four.
Thank you, Principal O'Shea. I'm here to discuss goal four, which is aligned with our strategic initiative, review of school safety, and develop priority actions as a district and for individual schools. So our fourth goal is centered around safety. Schools in the entire district have worked on streamlining safety procedures and protocols, and we continue to train staff and students and implement safety protocols fully into our daily practices. In addition, our schools have implemented the Raptor system for each building, which screens all visitors who are working with students at any point during the day. We also have additional cameras in and around all the school buildings. Next, our schools have been working closely with law enforcement officials to keep up to date on best practices as they relate to drills and protocols, all the evolving language about drills, protocols, procedures that are based on research, and with an eye always turned towards age-appropriate language for the students in the age groups with whom we work. Our schools have safety teams that meet monthly and represent a wide swath of staff, including administrators, classroom teachers, administrative assistants, and specialists. These teams include also the law and fire officials who align with our procedures, as I spoke of earlier, regarding safety drills and provide us with up-to-date information from the field on how to make these practices better for students and staff. After drills that we run in the schools, we collect data from staff in order to learn how to best implement or continue to implement these drills and maximize the least amount of disruption time within the day in our school uniform. Finally, our schools have working emergency response task force groups, or ERTF, that meet regularly to align best practices related to safety across the district and improve them accordingly. These groups have met regularly for years and will continue to do so. The first meeting of this year is scheduled for later this month. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Boynton, who will present the high school.
Wonderful. Thank you, Principal Zablik, and thank you to the Nishoba Regional School District, School Committee for the opportunity to share our school improvement plans with you this evening. Nishoba Regional High School has five key goals in the 2023-24 School Improvement Plan. Four of these goals have carried over from last year's SIP, and all of the goals are multi-year goals that are in various stages of progression. While the high school's goals are slightly different from the pre-K through eight goals due to the unique conditions at any high school, you will see definitely several through-lines that provide continuity and alignment pre-K through 12. I also want to share as well that even though safety procedures and communication protocols have not risen to the level of being included in the high school SIP, they are very much a part of our efforts at the high school and work that we're doing as well. And all of the high school's goals connect intimately with the district's strategic plan, and many of the goals do address multiple strategic initiatives within the strategic plan. Goal number one is to enhance and increase students' sense of engagement and belonging at Nishoba Regional High School by implementing a comprehensive approach that includes a shift in classroom instructional strategies, intentional social emotional learning, and opportunities for student voice and feedback. This is the newest goal in the Nishoba Regional High School School Improvement Plan, and it is intentionally placed at number one. Our students have reported a lack of engagement in school on the Panorama survey implemented over several iterations, and we view this student feedback as a call to action. I will share some specific steps when I get to the next slide. Goal number two is to engage in an audit of our high school curriculum within each department and create a front-facing curriculum guide, or create front-facing curriculum guides that are aligned to the standards and begin a multi-year curriculum review cycle. Goal number three is to examine the high school schedule to create a better schedule that facilitates the best use of instructional time, better access to course offerings, opportunities for deeper learning, and the ability for our staff to more effectively collaborate. Goal number four is to audit the process of leveling courses at the secondary level at the high school. And goal number five is to implement a data-driven intervention team and staff process to more effectively identify students who are in need of supports, to create, develop, and also implement a multi-tiered system of support approach at Nishoba Regional High School. Next slide, Alita. Yes, wonderful, thank you. For goal number one, which is around student engagement, we recognize the sense of urgency in the message our students are telling us about engagement. And to that end, we have an entire school-wide focus on engagement for the next several years. Departments have created shared student learning goals with look fours that focus on student engagement. What does this look like in various content areas, and what do we want to see students doing? Departments are creating internal mechanisms to measure engagement levels and are redesigning curriculum with high engagement instructional strategies. One example is the math department is using the resource Creating Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics as a foundational text to help redesign instruction. Other departments are exploring project-based learning as well as student-led conferences. We plan to schedule and implement student focus groups to elicit more targeted feedback from the survey, as well as generate possible action items directly from our students. We will be seeking feedback from parents and caregivers through a parent survey, and this is one feature that appears in several places in the high school's school improvement plan, and this is really to capture the important voice of our parents and caregiver community. Goal number two, I'm personally very proud Goal number two, I'm personally very proud of the work that's been done on this goal over the last year or so, and applaud the work of my teachers, my department heads, and along with incredible support from Teaching and Learning. We now have front-facing curriculum guides and are continuing to refine and revise our curriculum maps with an eye to deeper learning and authentic assessment. We're making real connections in our curriculum to the Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate Competencies, bringing Portrait into practice. And I want to highlight the work done by our Word Language Department, and that is their singular goal is Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate Competencies in their instruction. Hopefully, you saw that in their presentation. We've begun unpacking Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate with our students in homeroom, and I want to thank and acknowledge Assistant Principal Janine Boullet for leading the teacher working group for spearheading this. We are also, in a very exciting way, pursuing Innovation Pathway designation from DESI in two areas, advanced manufacturing as well as marketing. And I want to acknowledge the work of Stavros Andriopoulos, as well as Andy LeBlanc in spearheading this. And we've secured a planning grant to help with this process, and we're now in the process of applying for the implementation grant to see the pathways come to become a reality as early as next year. Again, I cannot thank enough the efforts of Stavros and Andy, as well as a partnership with Teaching and Learning. It's quite a big lift, and we're really excited about it. We've secured an additional grant for a team of high school teachers to enhance our knowledge and skill set on deeper learning through the Kaleidoscope Deeper Learning Grant, and the launch of that is at the end of November. I would be remiss if I didn't mention our MyCap grant as well that's secured by Jody Specht, having students kind of map out their post-high school planning, whether it be college career or another path. And then, just today, we began our training of department heads in the Analyzing Teaching for Student Results methodology as they begin to participate fully in the supervision and evaluation process. For goal number three, we formulated a scheduled working group that's comprised of 22 staff members, two from each department as well as administration, and the working group is tasked with exploring a variety of schedule models, identifying the needs and priorities that a new schedule will support, and elicit feedback from all stakeholders, and that includes staff, students, and parents and caregivers in the form of surveys and informational sessions. Ultimately, the working group will recommend a new schedule to the Schedule Committee, which is outlined in the unit aid contract, to propose a new schedule that would be implemented in the 2025-26 school year, with 24-25 being used for intentional professional development. As a leadership team, for goal number four, our department heads and administration, we've begun the historical examination of data around our leveling system over about a 10-year timeframe, thanks to Jody Specht for providing that data, to look at patterns related to level enrollment by various demographics, as well as student movement between levels with a lens towards equity. We're examining current research about the impact of levels on student achievement, as well as beliefs about learning growth mindset and efficacy to inform any future decisions. We're looking again to our students and our parents and caregivers for feedback regarding levels and their experience with levels, and the intention is to make a purposeful and informed decision that is equity-focused and educationally sound about our leveling system. Finally, with goal number five, we've begun the revision of the MTSS process at the high school, and one step was to conduct an MTSS self-assessment. We identified a need to develop enhanced Tier One and Tier Two interventions, which is currently being spearheaded by Melissa Snedeker and Sarah Tate. We created the Student Success Center in the Bridge, which is a Tier One and Tier Two intervention support for students, which can also be used in a coaching model with teachers. All staff have now been foundationally trained in the calm compassionate teaching methodology, which we have used as a structure for our stat process, as well as beginning implementation in classroom settings. Our stat team regularly looks at student data, and we aspire to form PLCs at the high school in the future with a schedule that can support them. Thank you again for the opportunity to share what we've been working on at each of our schools. This work is real, it's important, it's also complex and multi-layered. Ultimately, it's in the service to our students and for our students who deserve the very best from us. Principal Bates will provide the closing remarks.
Such as they are. We believe that together, our preschool through 12 school improvement plans guided by the goals of the strategic plan are on a trajectory to build the competencies of the Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate, and we thank you again for the opportunity to share this important work with you.
Thank you so much. That was impressive, as always. I want to open it up to the committee for questions. We're not voting on these plans tonight. We plan to vote on these at the next meeting on the 29th, at which time our principals will not be present. So, questions now? Really quick, Alita, do you think or Kirk, do you think that this presentation could be added to the materials?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, because it's really awesome. Can you guys just talk or one or more of you speak a little bit about how the school improvement plan is done in concert with your school councils? How does that work?
Well, we all do it a little bit differently, but I think there's some uniformity where, you know, we work collectively to design our school improvement plans, and then ultimately we present them to our school councils, who, you know, they'll often ask questions, and sometimes we'll have to go back and maybe collect additional information for them, but ultimately, their role is to vote similarly and approve the school improvement plan at the local level. There is an opportunity there in those meetings, at least I felt this at Hale, where they'll ask questions, and they'll probe in some specific areas that might be unique or concerning to them as a parent or as a representative of the committee. So, it usually takes more than just one meeting.
I would add to that, too. I think it's consistent across us is that each meeting, there's a time to circle back on, you know, one or more of the objectives and just to keep that front-facing part of guiding the work that we do together.
I would say one thing that's been different in the last two years than in the past is that there's been a real intent with this group to align it directly to our strategic plan. That has not always been the case, and there's been some more site-specific goals, and that's not the case. There's a lot of upward alignment. We work closely with one another and with our superintendent and assistant superintendent to have that alignment. So, something different than what we would have presented probably three years ago.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think also a connecting part of this is in the summertime at our tree, our principals provide their annual state of their school reports, and in those, we have discussions that lift up out of their school councils, and as we workshop and craft our alignment and where we're going to put our focus, they take that workshop work back to their school councils as a place to get that circular feedback.
Any questions?
Yeah. So, I'm just interested, I don't want to take up time of the school committee and principals, but if we were interested in learning more about the calm compassionate teaching framework, where would we be directed to?
We'll get that for you. It might be beneficial, we can even inquire to see if Dr. Epstein himself would be willing to come before the committee and talk a little bit about calm compassionate teaching.
Fantastic.
Does that interest the committee?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Dr. Epstein will be presenting a family workshop this spring as well to provide complimentary messaging for our families. We've presented one last spring. He's going to come back and present again this spring.
Is that in conjunction with CPAC? Or was it? No.
I think it was presented by our PPS director, but it was part of the strategic work.
Thank you. Can you just help to remind the community or the committee the trajectory of the SIPs? They are one year?
Thank you for that. Yeah, they are multiple-year goals. So, as we look towards 2027 as our target for our strategic plan, you'll notice in these plans that they'll say one of two years or they're year, so like the PLC goal, for instance, is in year one of three, because we did the PLC training in June, then again in August. So, they're a multi-year goal. So, this is work in progress, so expect revisits as they bring these goals back. The updates are seen sort of in the action steps, as some action steps fade away and new action steps are introduced.
So, this plan is an annual plan, but the goals are multi-year?
Correct.
If I may reiterate?
Yes, the strategic plan is written to 2027, but we are in a couple of our goals, like in goal one, we're in year two, three, if we're going, one of three, or two, so.
I was just going to add that the presentation, where it differentiates between the next iteration of the plan and the areas that we're celebrating, those are in the highlights section, some of the things that we've achieved so far in, as we move into the next iteration of the plan.
So, one of the things that we're trying to be very intentional about, mindful of, is developing plans and school goals that are sort of soupe de jour, if you will. And from year over year, depending on how your taste of soup changes, your goals change, right? And we're trying to avoid that by staying true to our strategic work, making the reasonable adaptations along the way as we learn. Being a learning organization, we find out things about ourselves along the way that tell us, oh, we need to adjust, we need to pivot. And so, those are the types of things you would see in changes in the plans you have to do.
You would see that specifically if you looked at the current reality for each of the plans. That captures kind of what we've accomplished from last year to this year, and then the action steps are what we're attempting to accomplish by the end of this school year. So, you would see that next year, we would likely come to you with a greater number of things that have been checked off and captured in the current reality. You know, those are things that we are working on or have accomplished from last year to this year.
So, I think that's like at the heart of my question is the cycle. So, like, for example, for the committee, you know, Kirk's evaluation cycle is a one-year cycle. You know, all these things exist in cycles. So, the title page says till 2025, 22 to 25. So, I'm just trying to understand how we evaluate this, or do, you know, so we approve the school improvement plans as a matter of law, but then are we, like, at what point are we responsible for checking in on this and ensuring that progress is being made?
You don't.
Right. So, how does that, how does that cycle close?
You do that annually in the superintendent's evaluation, and that's where you cite it in terms of the standards and progress that we're making towards those standards. So, these, because if we remember, our school councils, they're advisories. They're not decision-making bodies, they're advisory bodies to our principals as they bring these forward and the school improvement plans. If you recall, the school improvement plan is required to be voted on, the high school improvement plan is required to be voted for approval by the school committee, and if it's not done so with in 30 days of being presented with that plan, it's presumed approved. And we made decisions several years back to say, this is good practice for all of us, which is why we've come together in this effort. So, we've come forward to you in an effort of beyond compliance to say, we want to just make sure you're well-informed on the work that's being done in schools.
Hi, Mike.
In the previous slide, Slide Six, that was, we highlighted some of the goals for the high school, and I noticed that the goal five, no, goal two, no, goal five, sorry, multi-tiered system of support. It looks like we're looking forward to implementing that at the high school, which I think is outstanding. Two questions. Is there consideration in implementing a multi-tiered system of support at the middle and elementary levels? And also, to what extent has Tier One training occurred among administration and staff in order to support the development of that system?
I'll let the middle school speak to that, or the high school. We have Sarah Tate and Melissa Snedeker Ryan. They are our Bridge and Student Success Center staff members. The district is providing MTSS training on our early release days, and Sarah and Melissa are leading that work in conjunction with Teaching and Learning, as well as our People's Support Department at the high school level, to then link with the middle schools for that vertical alignment. So, that work is currently underway.
So, the training is occurring internally? We're not outsourcing the training? Internally? Yeah, okay.
With the use of the DESI MTSS supports, right? Yeah.
Well, as I was talking about, like, so the implementation of the PLC, Solution Tree, the WIN time, all of that is ongoing. That started this summer, the change in the schedules to adapt for it, and so that's ongoing, that's in a process this year.
We're working closely with Teaching and Learning to create the MTSS handbook, which is, you know, would be like a manuscript for us to follow as we go through this process of multiple tiers of intervention. So, we've had our first meeting once already, I think we meet next week again to continue the good work that we're doing, and that's a cohort of people. It's not just administrators, it's Teaching and Learning, it's teachers.
Coaches.
Yep. So, it's a group of people that are coming together, following the DESI model to create a handbook for us to follow, and it's, that's K to 12.
And that's in the Shoba handbook?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
That's great.
Yeah, great, thank you.
I really appreciate that you guys are talking Tier One, because I think, in my experience, Tier One tends to be taken for granted, and I think that's a big mistake, because Tier One is applicable to all the kids.
Yep.
And it's the foundation of how much everything else sits.
Can I make a request that we have some sort of presentation on MTSS? Because I'm not sure that everyone on the committee is familiar with it, and it seems to be kind of a cultural centerpiece, and I think it would be really important for us to learn more about that.
Why don't we put it up on the parking lot of the planning calendar? Oh, you already have it now. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris.
I think that's a great idea. Okay, there's one other small question I had, and that was because we are prioritizing safety procedures, but the high school doesn't have it on their plan, but you said they're still super working on it. You're all?
We are, we are. I could have probably 10 goals actually. But I seemed good. But so, we are working on our safety protocols. We're in line with our drills 100%, our training for our staff, our training for our students. We've shifted protocols for door access, there's signage, and we have up and running the Raptor system at the high school. So, we're in line, it's just, I could have 10 goals.
You've probably been. Yeah, it's embarrassment riches, all the work you guys are doing. But what I'm wondering is, the SRO is at the high school. So, is the SRO a part of the conversation and how we're building that with our, we decide, is Ross still in charge?
So, yes, Mr. Mulcain still is operating as our chief safety officer as we onboard our nurse leader and get the proper training, like Alice' training, in place over the course of time. The SRO has very specific job responsibilities that are outlined in the SRO contract, if you recall, when that was presented, and that's presented annually to this committee. So, when we think of school safety, we don't think in terms of necessarily the SRO at the high school. It's all the things that encompass around it. It's that sort of embrace of all the safety measures, from good professional development and de-escalation strategies to literal brick-and-mortar security type things.
So, you interface with the town's safety entities beyond the SRO. She is not our one conduit.
Mr. Mulcain?
Yeah, that's correct. So, anytime that we're going to be discussing, I'll use Principal Bates' most recent Alice drill. So, the chief of police was there to give feedback and walk through all, actually partnered with him for part of the walk during the drill, and when they had their feedback meeting and broke down the drill and talked about positives and areas for improvement, he's part of that, gave feedback, and that's, I think, true and continues to be true in all the buildings, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Is this the SRO a police officer?
Yes.
Okay.
Bolton police officer.
It is. So, are they armed when they're on campus?
Yes, the Bolton police officer is armed.
And that's only at the high school?
Correct.
We do, we do have regular visitations at our schools from all of our local first responders that do walkthroughs when they're on duty. that do walkthroughs when they're on duty.
Oh, I just, a couple of things. One, first thing, I continue to just be inspired by all of the things that you put forward and all the amazing work that's being done in each of the buildings, and thank you for that. And in addition, I'm thankful to hear all of the work that is going into the social emotional learning. That's so important for our kids. And then I have, I don't know if it's a comment or a question, because I'm not, I know that this is not something that you want to share a lot of procedural information about, but I have some concerns about the Alice protocol and implementing with the younger children particularly, and our children needing to be safe in terms of safety procedures across the board, but also, and even with our older children, needing to feel safe as in, I am not afraid that something terrible is going to happen all the time. And I'm not sure if that's really a question or a comment, it's just a thought to put out there.
Mr. Mulcay, would you like to respond?
So to, you know, again, while being respective of the confidentiality of some of our procedures, I know that we work to make sure that the messaging is age-appropriate, right down to what is said over the loudspeakers. And I would expect that all of the principals have some similar process for making sure that staff are available or that we're looking for signs in students that if they're stressors after the fact. I mean, this is part of the reason why we let families know when we have drills, to say that a drill occurred today, so that they're aware when that comes home. And I think that anytime a family brings a concern forward to the school about, this is how it's impacted my kid as being part of the drill, the school staff, whether it's mental health team or another connected adult in the building that might meet and speak with that student and talk about reassurance. Because I know I had, once as a principal, where parents would say, can you just check in with my kid tomorrow? Those types of things. So we continue to do that. But I think that your point is well made, that just because the kids are older doesn't mean that they don't have concerns or questions or fears in general, but also what drills may bring up to them.
Can I have a follow-up question to that? Do families in the district have the opportunity to opt out of participation to base and choose?
Yeah, so I was at a school safety summit yesterday through the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth, and this very sort of like topic came out. You know, in a lot of cases, we do give families a heads up that a drill's coming. So sometimes families do. I mean, I think as a principal, and I would imagine that our panel here encourage families, and this is where we try to give information, have those, you know, one-to-one conversations with families and reach out and say, let's talk, to make sure that their kids are participating because it is for their benefit, and make sure that we have the right supports in place for those students. But ultimately, if a family chooses to know, you know, if they know the drill is in the morning on Thursday, they may choose to elect to keep their student out until that drill. It can't happen. The frequency of it, I don't think it's that frequent, but it can't happen.
All right, so I just want to say one final thing, and I think that this is kind of speaking for Annie Cohen who can't be with us tonight. So one thing that I really appreciate across the board is the feedback loop that you guys are building in and that you are being kind of courageous leaders in asking families for their feedback and how they're experiencing the system. And so that's so important. It is actually, I think, the most important thing you can do, is to ask the users what their experience is. And I'm so grateful for that, so, yeah.
It's not just the families. Mr. Blanchard went into all the classes and talked to the kids too, to get feedback.
The kids, everyone. Yeah, everyone. So I'm so appreciative. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys. You're quite the crew, and we appreciate you being here. All right, so our agenda is on a type right now, it said that...
We're not, we're not too far out.
No, okay, okay. What do you have, what do you have next?
We have a beautiful screening assessment.
Me too. Okay, so we're heading back up to strategic. Oh, sorry, Joel, we can do that next.
Can we do the laser cutter donations?
So guys, because Joel is still here with us, we have a new business item that we're gonna do next. It is letter D. The FSS laser cutter donation. And let's, maybe just have a brief explanation?
Sure. Yeah, so I'm here tonight, I believe you have a copy of the letter seeking your consideration for a laser cutter that was donated to our engineering program from our PTO. We were able to get the laser cutter through a combination of the PTO's fundraising practices, including a STEM award to the PTO from the Retired School Volunteer Association. And we will, with, you know, with all potential additions to our programming, evaluate how that enhances student experiences in the engineering lab.
Awesome. Let's start with the motion. Would you mind?
Sure, I'll move to approve the donation from the Florence Sawyer School PTO of a Darkly Labs and Blazer II laser cutter engraver valued at $2,495.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Yeah, Scott.
So this is the middle school, right?
Yes.
And is this for a program that's unique to Florence Sawyer, or do the other middle schools also have similar programs?
We have similar curriculum and similar objectives. This is, I believe that the laser cutter doesn't exist in the other two schools.
So how do we ensure equal access?
Is this a conversation you've had with your middle school colleagues as well?
Yes.
Yeah. When we look at these opportunities that come before us, we'll take them, you know, understand them on a pilot basis, what's the utility and how does this lift the educational programming? If we feel that this is gonna lift the educational programming, is gonna benefit all of our students, well, then we would come forward through the budget process to say, we want to equalize this in our other programs. But let's give it a test run and see how these things go.
Smart.
How, for items like this, especially when they're donated and maybe not through the normal procurement thing, is health and safety of the equipment assessed? I noticed there's no filter unit in the donation letter mentioned, so I'm just wondering sort of how that kind of stuff is handled in the...
The exhaust, yeah. So build a port that would, that would...
Vent?
Vents, thank you. Vent the exhaust outside.
Out of the building?
Out of the building, yeah.
Yeah, our local team was able to do that.
So is this already in use?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have, well, I have a follow-up question, I guess probably to Scott's point. So we, our PTO had talked about getting Oculus glasses a long time ago, there was a lot of research around that facilitated by the former treasurer. I'm wondering why, like, why are we approving this? If it's more of a operating, building-based item that was donated? I mean, do we approve all donations?
Above, the newest policy is above $500.
So as we, as we have examined that, particularly over the past year, we've closely examined taking in donations and approving those as they come along. So this is actually a relatively recent practice in those types of things. It has introduced the question just around PTO participation in schools in general and accepting those day donations even for enrichment activities that have value over $500. And so we're gonna be working closely with our PTOs to develop some standards in bringing forth their budgets in a way to this committee, so that early on in the year, you can approve those PTO budgets so that they can participate in those activities at their schools. So that's something that has risen to us recently that we're gonna be working on with them this year.
Specifically around like the cultural enrichment?
Yeah, yeah.
But just donations?
Donations from the PTO.
That's different.
Right.
But the whole thing, I think that there's also Policy D, which is fiscal policy. We had, we had a very big overall of that a couple of years back, but there's another change that needs, that's coming through the policy subcommittee. And I think that this is also a part of it, is all of these things. So this is like changing.
Yep.
I think though, too, did Dana want to raise a question? Go ahead.
Well, I'm just, I guess I'm curious about the timeline, because is this something, are we supposed to be approving these things before they are brought into the school and now the school has been altered in a way to make this accessible or functional? So I guess I'm just kind of curious what the rules are for a timeline. Should this have been done before any of that work had taken place?
And these are the things we're putting into place to correct that, because there's been some practices of purchasing and donating materials to school. And so as this came forward, we said, we're gonna use this as a moment to get that practice started and rolling. So it's abundantly clear we gotta do these things ahead of time.
Are we gonna have to, I mean, is there a push to bring forward any other donations or items that have not been approved by the school committee at this point?
That's a great question, and this is one of those questions that I'm actually having some dialogue with some of my other superintendent colleagues and how they bring this forward in generalized way, so that you don't get hamstrung into coming forward with every item that comes as part of the PTOs. Our meetings will be nothing but PTO donation approvals if that's the case. So I will be bringing that forward to this committee in the future.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of a laser cutter? Thanks, Joel, for sticking around.
Appreciate it.
All right. Now we are going to go to the piece on the agenda that is about, oh, ooh, sorry, the universal screener assessment update. So we're backing up to strategic work, and I'll turn it over to her.
It's an exciting moment for us, as we have worked at our universal screening assessment systems in terms of how we assess reading and mathematical development with our students, beginning kindergarten and coming up through the grades up to grade nine. So I would like to introduce once again Assistant Superintendent Friend to present on the universal screening data.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. As Superintendent Downing mentioned, this is in the second year of implementation of our universal screeners. I am going to provide for you a high-level overview, basically, of our universal screening results. There's much detail in the appendix, grade-specific and school-specific data, which I will not be addressing specifically, but you can find that specific information in the appendix, much like the MCAS presentation that I shared. I'm gonna go, you can turn to the next slide. It's an overview of the presentation in brief, connections to our strategic plan. To reinforce this idea of all of the work that we're implementing is really interdependent, and our universal screeners have a role in that interdependence. I'll speak a little bit about and remind the committee around our early literacy screening regulations, which I had spoken about earlier in October, provide you with an overview of those results, high-level overview of our achievement and growth data, specifically as it relates to our district-wide student learning goal that Superintendent Downing had shared with the committee earlier this year, and then point to some of our current steps. And then the appendix that I referenced. In terms of alignment to our strategic plan, and, you know, and speaking in reference to what our principals had shared earlier as well, we talk quite a bit as a district and as a leadership team about our work being interdependent. And I think I'm growing an even greater respect for the interdependence of our work. And that our work does not exist in isolation, and our work exists in support of the strategic plan. And I think our universal screeners are a good example of this. They are an important component of our multi-tiered system of support that we're working to build. They are important in that they point us in a direction of where we need to work to strengthen our tier one in instruction and provide timely and targeted support for our students who are needing tier two and tier three intervention and support. Our PLC structures intertwine with this work as well, because it's helping to support our team's ability to analyze the data from our screeners and offer other diagnostic assessments to administer to inform student process. And our instructional coaches have been critical to helping lead these conversations and support the conversations. Work as it relates to our adjustments with our master schedule is also part of the interdependent work, which is allowed time for us to have those PLC times to talk about data, in the addition of wind time at, you know, K to A, where we're using and will continue to work to use that time for providing our students with targeted instruction, intervention and management. So all of the work is interconnected. In terms of the next slide, this is just a recap of universal screeners. I've already provided the committee with this information, this is just a review. Our universal screeners, as you're aware, they're short, they're about eight to 20 minutes. They are just one data point. We use, and our teachers use, an arsenal of data to help inform understanding of student need, performance and growth. This is one data point. It's a data point that we talk about with our principals and our teachers as really like a flashing light, to look deeper, to look more. And we're really grateful to be able to use this as a tool. We're implementing our universal screeners, as you're aware, three times a year. The Renaissance platform provides diagnostic assessments, custom assessments, opportunities for practice, so it's really much more than the universal screeners, but this is the start. Our universal screeners also provide us an opportunity to look at big picture patterns when it comes to curriculum and instruction, and we're using our screeners for that purpose as well in our PLCs. So the next few slides take us through, what's our early literacy screening data looking like? Thank you, Lea. This slide is a review of what I had shared with the committee in, earlier in October, as it relates to DESI's early screening regulations, which were put in place last year to be implemented this year. This is an outline of what those regulations include. Assessment at least twice per school year using a DESI-approved screening instrument. For us, that's the Renaissance STAR. Including an instructional response based on the screening results, a plan to meet students' needs based on the screening results, a plan for progress monitoring, and then family communication within 30 school days of the screening results for those students whose screening results fall in the urgent intervention or intervention categories. And then provision for our families to offer a follow-up discussion. All of that is happening right now, and will continue as we engage in family conferences this week. Next slide, Lea. I, again, had mentioned this to the committee earlier in October, but the early screening regulations are really intended to work with the Massachusetts Dyslexia Guidelines. And this slide is intending to show how they interconnect, what our screening assessments do provide and what they don't provide. It's important to note that our early literacy, universal screening assessments do not diagnose dyslexia, but they do identify a student's risk for potential poor reading outcomes and give us an opportunity to intervene and provide targeted instruction at the first signs of reading challenges beginning for us in kindergarten. at the first signs of reading challenges beginning for us in kindergarten. Next slide, Alita. So these next two slides provide an overview, and I've taken down some notes here. These next two slides provide an overview of our district's early literacy screening results for our K one, two, three students. Again, this encapsulates those grade spans where we have those early literacy screening guidelines and the regulations and then notification for families in K to three. Our kindergarten results reflect a baseline assessment at this point. Our kindergarten will be screened officially as part of the two times of the year in February. We wanted to give our kindergarten students an opportunity to get off the ground as kindergartners and give them time to settle in so that we can get a strong understanding of what their needs are. So the Universal Screening Window for our kindergartners will be in February. For everyone else, the Universal Screening Window has already completed. For grades K to one, we use the Early Literacy Assessment in grades two to three, the STAR Reading Assessment. It's important to note that our K one, two students are also assessed with curriculum-based measures to provide more granular information about their early reading skills, including phonemic awareness and phonics. As students transition to student reading, once readiness is demonstrated, in some cases, students take both the STAR Early Literacy Assessment and the STAR Reading Assessment. In terms of looking at these bar graphs and what this means, the on-watch category, you may be wondering. The on-watch category is intended for just that, for us to keep an eye on these students. It is expected that students in the on-watch category will attain typical growth and move into the green at or above proficiency levels with Tier One, high-quality Tier One instruction. But our on-watch students are on our teacher's radar and our PLC's radar so that we can monitor their growth for the next screening window. To give you a general sense of what we are looking at in terms of number of students, the 3% of students falling in the urgent intervention category here for our kindergartners represents five students district-wide. So these are district-wide results. Next slide, Alita. I've shown our grade two and three results here. And I know that we've spoken about this before with the committee, but our grade three students, those are our current grade three students, were in preschool. As a reminder, in 2019, 2020, and in kindergarten in 2020 and 2021. So we continue to be mindful of the needs of our students in grade three and in grade four and the need to support their growth as we work to accelerate learning from them as a result of the pandemic and other factors. Next slide. Okay, so there's a lot here. And I need to give credit to our instructional coaches and to our teachers for providing me with this information. This did not come from teaching and learning. It didn't come from, for me, it came from our teachers and what's actually happening in our buildings. And this is what's critical for us. It's not just a number. It's not just a data point. It's okay, now what do we do? And in essence, what this screen works to encapsulate here is there are really three parts. There's reviewing the assessment information from our Universal Screeners. And this is work that's happening in our PLCs. We're looking at other assessment information. We're looking at the need to administer other diagnostic assessments. And we're also considering supports that are already in place. Of note, for those students who are falling in the urgent intervention and intervention categories for our students in grades one, two, and three, in the majority, we're fortunate that we already have supports in place for those students, whether that's English language support, support through special education, or support through our literacy specialists. There's a small handful of students who are not already receiving support in one of those three domains. But now we know. So now we can get them what they need. So the first phase is review and assess the information. The next phase is to determine those instructional next steps as it relates to reinforcing our core instruction, providing additional targeted support during win time. We're moving forward with Tier Three support such as through our literacy specialists or another venue. Provided some specific targeted instruction examples for you there. And then of course, monitoring the progress of our students through our progress monitoring tools through STAR. We've provided some examples for you there, some of the curriculum-based measures of CBMs that are provided within STAR that our teachers, our coaches, and our specialists can use to monitor growth. And then all of that information about student progress comes back to the PLCs. And our PLCs are working to review progress and assess the next steps for the instructional coaches and the literacy specialists for literacy. So that's what's happening in K to three for our early literacy screening results as it relates to those regulations. The next half of the slideshow here is going to provide you with information about what our growth and achievement is looking like for STAR reading and for STAR math, and again, in global, high-level terms. So if you go to the next slide, Alita, there are two different graphs here. The tile on the left, separate from the tile, the graph on the right. The tile on the left shows our student growth percentile for students from K to one for early literacy. That is the growth for our first grade students from last year as kindergartners. And the student growth percentile right there is 58.4%. So what that means is that 58.4% of our current first graders have attained typical or higher-than-typical growth. As a reminder to the committee, we have set our district's goal for growth at 70% for this school year. So our goal is rigorous. We're committed to it. And so we're going to be watching this data point, the metrics, as we move forward into the winter and the spring. But our goal is that we want 100% of our students attaining at or typical growth. But we've set a growth measurement for ourselves at 70%. The second chart shows, and we've seen this type of data and this type of graph before with MCAS, where we want to be in that top right-hand quadrant with higher growth and higher achievement. And so you can see here what it's looking like for each of our schools as it relates to higher growth, high achievement, and the work to be done here. Of course, for all of us in the specific areas as well. So Alita's moved on to the next slide. If you could just go back to the reading one, Alita. Similar kind of slide is the STAR Early Literacy Slide, as is the next slide, which is the math slide. This is our STAR reading achievement and growth in totality for our students who took the STAR reading assessment in grades two through eight. This is again, growth measured from last fall to this fall. And we're at 75.7% of our students attaining typical or above growth from the administration last fall. And you can see where our schools are falling in terms of high growth, lower achievement. We want high growth, high achievement for all of our students, all of our schools. And where we do have lower achievement, we want to see high growth. That goes for our schools, for our grade levels, and for each and every student. That's reading. And then for math, our students in ninth grade take the STAR math. And for STAR reading, we assess through eighth grade. For STAR math, we assess through grade nine. And so you can see this information here, our student growth percentile, again, in same fashion from last fall. We have 74.8% of our students achieving at or typical growth from administration last fall for math. And you can see the breakdown here for each of our individual schools and where they're falling as it relates to achievement and growth proficiency. For the committee's awareness, we are using and we're looking at this data in terms of how it aligns with our MCAS data. And you may remember when we presented our MCAS data, we shared some, concerns isn't the right word, but we pointed out some areas that we were keeping a close eye on, which is grade five and grade seven. And so we're looking at this STAR data and how our students are doing, not only in current grade five, as we look at our instruction and our curriculum in grade five, but also how those students are doing in grade six. So we're looking with that lens as well. You see high growth for all grade levels and schools in all of those areas, which is great to see. We are seeing higher achievement in all schools with the exception of two grade levels at one of our schools. And we are wrapping supports directly in those locations with the support of the principal and the instructional coaches and with T and L. Next slide, Alita. So these are current steps that we're taking and that I had mentioned in the other slide. That had a lot of text on it and our principals spoke to it too, so I won't repeat myself. But I'm excited to share, if I may, the diagnostic report because this is really where we're finding utility with the information. Again, it's not just a number, it's now what? So if, Alita, you would humor me and click on that hyperlink there. I want to show you an example of a report that our teachers have access to and are using. Again, this looks like a lot of text and we're working to support our teachers' knowledge of how to use all of the reports in STAR.
Is this just for one student?
This is for one student.
Will parent, we provided this at parent-teacher conferences?
So we have provided teachers with this kind of tutorial, if you will, along with another example of a report. The utility here, and this is the conversation that I'm happy to be talking about here, is it's not just about the number, right? It's not just about the color. Where the benefit to this report is, is in all of those subdomains and skillset scores at the bottom of the report. Because this is where we can now, if we think about like driving a car, right? And a dashboard and you have an indicator light that's on, on your dashboard, and you're looking at what's going on, you know, what does that signal mean? This is for our students where we can see where there are relative areas of strength, skill areas of relative strength, and subdomains and skill areas that the student's not there yet and where they would benefit from targeted instruction or intervention. It also gives us information for those students who have already demonstrated understanding, already demonstrated proficiency, and are ready for the next step. So there's great utility in this report at the individual level for our teachers to better know their students and what is going on in terms of the why of the what of the number. If that makes sense. It is important to note, bottom right-hand corner of that call-out there, that in some cases, this is an early screening report, beginning of the year. In some cases, that skill just may not have been taught yet or introduced yet at this juncture in the school year. And so it's important for us to remember that. You could flip back to this slide, Alita. I'll just close up. Oh.
You've got to escape and go back because it's the very last slide in the deck.
Current steps.
You've got to go back to 15.
Probably like slides.
That one.
So these are steps that we are currently working on with our principals, with our instructional coaches, and that we are seeing being reflected in those professional learning communities. Our teachers are talking about our Tier One core first instruction that's critical. And these kinds of reports provide us with information to have those conversations. We're using and will continue to work to use our win time to provide students with Tier Two targeted support. We're using online practice tools as part of the Renaissance Learning Suites, such as Lolilo and Freckle, and also using Lexia as practice tools to support our students. This year, we're implementing our Bridges Intervention Kits. I think I've mentioned this to the committee before, as well as Concept Quests, which is math enrichment associated with Bridges during win. And we're going to continue to strengthen our tools as it relates to progress monitoring using those tools I mentioned as well. And as it relates to K to three literacy and K to five literacy, we're going to continue the K to five ELA curriculum review cycle. And I know that hopefully we'll be able to present to the committee an update in December on where we're at with the curriculum review cycle for ELA as it relates to particularly our K to three core instruction and the development of core foundational skills for our students in literacy for each and every student. The rest of the slideshow is the appendix I referenced. And the school-specific, the grade-level-specific information, all of those conversations are having with our principals and with our instructional coaches. And then they're carrying it forward with their teachers during the PLC time.
Fantastic.
That's it. Thanks Laura. Wonderful. Question?
Yeah, so I noticed, go back a couple of slides, 13, adding the delay. On the bottom here, you have a breakout by school. And I see, I'm not all that familiar with this particular assessment. And I've seen similar things and sometimes it can be a little dangerous to compare schools because they have different populations. So I'm just worried that people might see this data and see one school or two schools as outliers. Could you talk a little to that?
Yeah, we have that conversation a lot. I mean, I can tell you that in prior iterations, and you know that I've been in the district for a while, we never would show this kind of information. We made a commitment to supporting our principals and to supporting one another in terms of collective efficacy and all means all. All of these students are all of our students regardless of where they are, what grade level they're in. And so when we are transparent and saying, here's what I'm doing, what are you doing that's working? We get better. So we don't, and our principals, we don't, we're all in it. So yes, and the data is the data. It's what's happening for each and every individual student that matters in growth for each and every individual student. We don't compare. I don't know if.
Well, I would say too, the growth percentile is the important piece. This is the first test. The second test will, I think, be more telling in that wherever a child begins, have we been able to move the needle for that child?
Correct. That's exactly it. I think it demonstrates also that while we are three towns, we are a regional school district and we are committed to a collective effort. That no matter what your address is, whether it's in Stowe, Stowe, you're supporting Lancaster, or Lancaster, you're supporting Bolden, Bolden, or supporting Stowe, you know, we are a supportive community in that way. And the fact of the matter is, we can not compare schools. That doesn't mean our community doesn't do it anyway. So let's just look at the truth of nature and things and be honest about it and acknowledge it and say, well, this is where we need to find our resources and do some high-quality instruction for students where they need it. And we're willing to face that.
So along those lines, I mean, have you ever considered the natural experiment opportunities that this data presents? I mean, you know, is it the leadership? Is it the instructors or is it the water? You know, like, I mean, if you thought about shuffling the leadership at the school? You know, like, I mean, have you thought about shuffling the leadership with the schools to see if the results change as a result of the leadership? Or if you shuffle the teachers around, the results change as a result of the teachers? Like, have you considered those options?
You know, we consider all options. For me to, like, deliberate on shuffling my leaders on a night when they all presented their school improvement plans together, I think would be a lot of putting. So I'm not going to do that tonight. But we look at all things. We look at all things. And we deliberate on what are the types of moves that we can make, when we can make them, what are the most important things to do at the most important times? So, yeah, all questions we examine for the basis of understanding. We also look at some things like if a particular content area is taught in a certain sequence in one school versus a different sequence in another school, that's going to be reflected in data points as well and can impact that. So that's where we're working hard on the curriculum alignment throughout the years to remove those variables as well. So as we see variables, we address them.
Man.
Yeah.
I would say to, having been on both ends as a teacher and as a principal of when either your school or your grade level does really well, it's a really slippery soap. And it's one that I know I've talked with our teachers and our, and my families as principals, as a principal about, is the data is just a number. What matters is what happens for each and every individual student to move them from their point A to their point B. And it fluctuates, right? So we could see this comparison hypothetically this year, and we could see it look differently in the winter. We could see it look differently in the spring. We could see it look differently next year. What matters is what's happening in the classroom each and every day.
So guys, with our eye on the clock, I think I want to wrap this conversation up, if that's okay. Can I just get a thumbs up from my quorum here? We have two very important votes. Are we good to stay for another few minutes here? I know.
I need you for this one.
All right, so Laura, I want to say thank you for this. This is amazing, and I'm going to put some time into that appendix soon.
Please do.
And I encourage the community to as well.
I would just, you know, offer to, if it's okay with the superintendent or the chair, that if anyone has any additional questions for me, I'm happy to speak with anyone, including, you know, our community in any fashion, more fully. I know there's a lot of information and the time is short, but I'm happy to talk further.
Well, we have conferences the next couple of days too, so that I'm sure that the conversations will be flowing. Okay, guys, so we're going to move on to up and out of the superintendent's report. We're going to go over to new business, and that is 7E. This is a very important item that was added to our agenda late because we could not foresee the necessity. And so it is here, and we are not only asking to review this, you know, what is ultimately a perfunctory piece of the process, the MSBA process, but we need you guys to vote tonight. So do you want to queue it up because Joe's not here?
Yes. So you're essentially authorizing the superintendent to sign the project funding agreement. The numbers are the same, the products are the same, the language isn't the same. It is a perfunctory piece that comes out of, once the MSBA voted our project, they did that, we go from project scope and budget agreement to project funding agreement. We need to execute, the reason we need to execute this tonight is because at the next school committee meeting, we have to certify the minutes and submit it back to the MSBA. And we have to do that within the 30 days that they noticed, gave us notice, which was on the middle of the day on the 13th. So our next meeting wouldn't be until December 13th, so we wouldn't risk of not being in compliance. So we want to move forward with this. So I'm asking for your authorization to sign the agreement.
Go for it.
Okay, so I'll move the Nesho Regional, oh, yeah, I'll move the Nesho Regional School District editor into and rebound by the project funding agreement, PFA. Furthermore, authorizing Superintendent Kirk Downing to execute the PFA on behalf of the district.
I'll second that. Do you have any questions? All those in paper. Okay, fantastic, thanks, guys. So, moving right along here. We have one piece of unfinished business, and that's the subnurse rate increase. So I'm going to go right to the motion. Go ahead, Mike.
Move to approve the increase of the substitute nurse daily rate to $210.
And I'll second that. Any discussion?
One question.
Go for it.
So I know last time we kind of discussed how we only revisit these rates when we find that we can't fill the positions. Is that, did we discuss that it would be something that would maybe be revisited on a more regular basis?
In terms of?
I mean, like, in a year from now, are you going to revisit it to make sure this rate is still competitive and getting the kind of people in that we need?
Yeah, I think what we're going to be looking at as a model moving forward is that the rates on these types of items would increase annually at the increases of which our other agreements increase. I think we want to develop that practice so we don't have to then fall behind again. We want to stay out in front all the time. So we're, I don't have a structure for that yet, but we hope to bring a structure forward for that.
Great, great. Any other discussion? All those in paper? Great, thanks, guys. So the last thing we have here to discuss are the subcommittee reports. And I'm going to challenge you all to give us a 30-second update on your subcommittee work. Good and important work nonetheless. Let's start with budget and warrant.
Budget and warrant met yesterday. We got an update on the budget timeline, and that seems to be going smoothly. We have also gotten updates on our stabilization fund. And we've sort of played around with defining what stabilization funds are and their purpose. Also reviewed grants revolving offsets for the district and how they can be, how and how often they can be reported out, which we'll be revisiting at a future meeting.
Great, thanks, Mike. Onto communication.
Communication will meet next week on Monday. At each time, we're here to have finished all of our initial revisions of the entire manual. And we have to figure out how to put it all together, and hopefully we'll have it for the entire committee to review. February is our goal.
Nice, that's awesome, thank you. The school building committee was actually supposed to meet this evening. We have bumped it out to the 30th for our next meeting, which Joe will preside over. Our personnel, okay.
Personnel, we got last week. And we're meeting again, hopefully after Thanksgiving. And working on the slideshow for the evaluation and the survey. Did it capture that?
Mm-hmm.
Great. All right, on to policy. Is there anybody here who can speak to policy?
Who wants to take it?
I don't know.
What are you guys up to?
We met. We chatted.
Well, we met on Monday.
Yeah, we met on Monday. We reviewed the.
Communication.
Parent communication?
No, we are starting to discuss that.
There was some procurement stuff that we queued up for our next conversation.
Policy D.
There were actually a couple, but yes, that was one of them.
Yes.
Sorry, it's after 9:00 PM, Mike.
I know.
Yeah, that's basically it. And then we just decided that we're going to break down parent, the parent communication policy by bucket. So we're going to be looking at like different sections, like first, starting off with, what was the first bucket that we were looking at? Specifics with parents.
Time communication.
Yeah, time communication. And then a sucker from that was reporting out on things like Power School in terms of turnaround time for grades.
And assignments.
And assignments.
Excellent. All right, well, thanks, policy. On advisory, anything new?
No, we will be meeting tomorrow. So hopefully, next meeting, I'll have a better update.
Awesome. DRJ?
Yep, so since last school committee meeting, the advisory board met as a whole group in November. Additional working groups also convened, including the Equity Audit Working Group, which prioritized review and preparation of recommendations for the superintendent. Briefly to summarize, we, DRJ is recommending prioritization of four buckets, including district-wide approaches to equity-embedded instructional practices, culture and climate to ensure affirming environment, staffing and professional learning, and expansion and deepening of family and community engagement. DRJ also met with Leah and I to review brainstorming ideas that we generated from our summer workshop and to draft a BEIB action statement. A draft statement was provided by Leah to DRJ, and they reviewed it as a team. Additional recommendations were provided following the meeting, which will be incorporated into the draft statement for our consideration at later time. They're also working on the development of a public forward-facing document, similar to the parking lot, that's maintained by our chair. So this will allow for quick and easy access for members of DRJ, the school committee, and the Shiloh community to know what is going on.
That's smart.
Great, that was 30 seconds.
Well done. Karen's not here for our CPAC update. OPEP.
Yeah, OMAC, the OMAC met last week where we approved our proposed recommendation. And we will be presenting at the next, presenting that recommendation at the next committee meeting.
It is on the planning calendar, which brings us to our last item, and that is items for the next agenda. Anybody have anything that they want to weigh in on? Just make note that we have an executive session next time, it is a virtual meeting. That executive session will start at 6:00 PM, and there are two items for consideration there.
Is there going to be a report out on the MASCE conference?
Yes, that's on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Is it because you wanted to hear, or did you go?
I did not go, I wanted to hear.
All right, so I think it was Joe and you who were there. Anything else for items for next agenda? So it's, yeah, Mike.
Last spring, we had a memo about the 14% increase on out-of-district placements. I wonder if we can get an update on where we stand with those numbers, if it's still at 14% or if there's been funding provided by the state to free those costs.
Yeah, this is a popular topic with the superintendents right now. We had a brief with MAS's leadership yesterday, so we'll have that memo today.
No, not today, but is it future agenda item?
Well, without question. We'll be bringing that forward at the time in which we understand the certain data while we're doing it.
Okay.
Yeah, without question, yeah, we're bringing that forward.
So I'm going to put that in the parking lot, just so we don't remember, forget.
So just for the group, this is something that happens every year. There's an annual increase to those costs. Last year's, the 14% was extraordinary, so.
Okay, anything else? All right, guys, I'm going to return.
Thanks, Becky.
Thank you. And all those in paper. Thank you so much for all of your time.